A little after 5 o'clock this evening, October 17th, 2024. I'd like to call the planning board meeting to order and introduce planning board members and staff. To my far right is Hank McCarroll, Doug Cook, our vice chair Jane Ramsen, I'm Rick Noonan, Chair. Immediately to my left Greg Cattamatory, the planning director. That's not Eric, that's Mr. Rosen next to him, and Eric, and then Sean Henry. So, welcome. I'm going to turn something down here, thank you. So first on the agenda this evening are A and R's site planner views and preliminary subdivision plans. We have two to deal with this evening. First is an approval not required plan submitted by Thomas Drinkwater to redivide property at 3 Castle Hill Road and 67 Hesperus Ave. Assessors map 191, lots 42, and number 6. I believe we have representation here. Got to get you a microphone, please, please hold. Yep. He was, he almost was a senior planner, but not anymore.
Yeah.
No, we need you on the mic, so. Just going to have you state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, Bob Griffin of Griffin Engineering on behalf of the applicant, Thomas Drinkwater. Griffin Engineering is in Beverly, Massachusetts. As you can see from the A and R plan in front of me, this is really just a simple lot line adjustment. Mr. Drinkwater has an arrangement with his neighbor, Mr. and Mrs. Giordano, to convey approximately 1,200 square feet of land. It will clean up a minor encroachment between these two properties. It'll have no effect on, it doesn't make anything more non-conforming or affect the frontage or a lot, or buildability of either lot. So it's just that little triangular parcel that I have highlighted in the plan in front of me that gets conveyed from the Giordano property to the Drinkwater property. The Giordano property right now is about 1.04 acres in size, so it's much larger than is required in the district. I'd be happy to address any questions.
It looks as though there's no change to the frontage based on the way the property was divided.
Very minor change, but the Giordano property has more than enough frontage even after the reduction.
Questions from members? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move that we approve the approval not required plan submitted by Thomas Drinkwater to redivide property at 3 Castle Hill Road and 67 Hesperus Ave.
I'll second that. Motion by Jane Ramsen, a second by Hank McCarroll, and we need a roll call vote.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member McCarroll?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member Bookin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all, and good evening.
Great. So next on the agenda this evening is an approval not required plan submitted by Peter Alf to redivide property at 64 and 68 Riverview Road. Assessors map 94, lots 35 and 38. We have representation, Attorney Favazza. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Just because this one's kind of a tricky one, if I can be made to a panelist, I have just like, I don't know, half a dozen slides to just make sure we can illustrate what we're doing. I raised my hand on the program. I think actually it should be, there we go. Thanks so much. So while this loads up, make sure that my mic is able. Thank you. I left computer audio, and then when I rejoined this panelist, it snagged me. Anyway, moving on. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm at Seaside Leo Solutions, a law firm at 123 Main Street in Gloucester. The applicant is Peter Alfie. He is under contract to purchase 68 Riverview Road from Mary Elizabeth Ryder. She is the owner of 64 Riverview, which is also the successor trustee owner of 68. And so this is actually, as far as the work, again, I'm sorry this is such a blurry projector these days, so much to look at this, but if you look in your plan, it's incredibly small lot line adjustment, if I can zoom in. So these two lines are pretty much right next to each other. You can see the old lot line to be deleted. Lot number one, which is the 68 over here, was just under 10,000 square feet, and so we're just jogging the line over enough to get it up over the minimum requirement. And so lot two remains conforming, lot one becomes conforming. We're in the R10 district. We are on a private way. There is, of course, a home on 64, 68 vacant, and the reason I wanted to have this little slideshow here is because we are under subsection C of 81L. It's also under subsection three of 225, which is where we are inside a confines of a private way. However, the planning board can make, you know, a finding that there is sufficient width, suitable grades, adequate construction as is to allow the division nonetheless, but it's not a public street or a street that's otherwise been created under subdivision control law. This predates some plans dating back into the late 1800s. And that is one such plan. The parcels outlined in green are the lots we're now talking about. And this is just one, probably the most helpful slide. This just shows you the aerial photo of the area. And again, the red marker is the house that's built. As we look at this, to our left would be the vacant lot, and as you can see, this part of Riverview Road is a loop, and there are other single-family houses having adequate access off the remaining portion of it. So I would hope that the planning board would find that despite it not being a road laid out under subdivision control law, despite it not being a public road, that there is adequate construction, grades, width, et cetera, to support another R10 lot. So again, everything remains conforming on two, things become conforming on one. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I can obviously hop back, but I just wanted to make sure we are clear as to the standards you'd be looking at today. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Any color from the planning department? Any questions from board members?
Yeah, quick question. Joel, I'm just wondering why you're going through all of the subdivision control stuff if it was a lot already in existence?
So it was a substandard lot, and the issue I'm more concerned about is that it fronts on a roadway that's never been approved in any way by this board. Usually it's either a roadway accepted by the city, or it's a roadway that's, even though it's private, is allowed to exist since 1960 forward under your subdivision rules and regulations. This is a private way that's been in place since, again, the late 1800s on maps at least. And so having never come before you formally for recognition that it's adequate, I wanted to go through that and make sure that the board felt it was an adequate road to cut another lot out, or to adjust a lot out, rather.
Yeah, there's been quite a bit of development on that road in the past 10 years anyway, so I'm fine with it, yeah.
Do you have a question?
Well, I'm just curious if that, then, by approving this, does that create the precedent going forward in our, in our records?
So that is, that's a great question for legal counsel for the city as to whether or not a decision. My, my rudimentary understanding is that applications are taken on their merits at each time. So I don't think this is you giving a blanket approval. This would be, this was adequate width, construction grades for the proposed lot in question, which is a 10,000 square foot R10 lot. I think if I wanted to put a supermarket there, you could say, hey, listen, the road's not wide enough for a supermarket.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move that we approve the approval not required plan submitted by Peter Alf to redivide property at 64 to 68 Riverview Road.
Second, we have a motion by Jane Ramsen, and second by David Rosen. All in favor with a roll call vote?
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member McCarroll?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Thank you, Beverly. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
So the Chair discretion, we're going to take things a little bit out of order this evening. We're going to, we've got a major project review that we've been working on for, it seems, a long time, and I'd like to, so under major project review in accordance with Mass General Law 5.7.4, the planning board will review the proposed major projects submitted by 20 Main Street LLC for a 24 residential unit mixed-use project to be located at 20 Main Street Assessors Map 7 and Lot 94. And we do have representation here. Floor is yours, Attorney Ellison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester, represent 20 Main LLC with the project, residential project at 20 Main Street. With me tonight is Kathy Gatton-Ary, and on Zoom, I believe, our representation from Hayes Engineering. We had received additional responses from Weston and Sampson, or comments from Weston and Sampson on the wastewater situation, and there has been a response filed from Hayes Engineering, and I believe that that's what we're here to discuss tonight and hopefully move on to a planning board recommendation after that.
So I'm not sure, I know you have the engineering team here as well, if they want to make a presentation to the board. You'll recall at the last meeting that this was discussed on October 3rd. We had received most of the response related to the revisions that were submitted by the applicant in response to the first peer review, and really the only kind of area that there was still some remaining questions was related to the stormwater design. And they were fairly highly technical comments, just in terms of the classification of soil that was used in the modeling versus what was visible on the site. Minor changes in the analysis, but not the overall conclusion in terms of the compliance of the stormwater design with the standards, as well as there was the request for a little additional information on the nutrient loading aspect of the development. There's a methodology for that, and there was a slight tweak to that, again, not with a substantial change in the results. So I think they were highly technical, but not really changing the conclusions. And at this point, Weston and Sampson is satisfied that the applicant has responded to all the comments that they've raised satisfactorily.
Thank you, Greg. In that case, there's no need for the engineering team for the applicant to make a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Ellison. So any, so any further comment, Greg? I mean, just...
I'm really just questions from the board at this, at this point. I think the peer review is complete for the aspects that the board directed to be reviewed that relate to the major project standards, as well as the standards as applicable of the board, which is kind of the guidance of the ordinance, is how would the planning board review this in, relative to its standards. So again, that's why the peer review was conducted to enhance the review of departments, as well as the engineering department, looking at the traffic submission, the stormwater design, utility design, and constructibility issues. And at this point, with the revised plans, bearing a date of October 15th, they are satisfied that they meet those standards.
Perfect. Questions from board members?
I noticed in the file that there were some letters about the, the trees on Main Street and that the two, two of the largest trees at that end of Main Street are going to be removed because of the project. And there were some citations in there that the special permit required that to be considered. Do we have any commentary on that?
So at the last meeting, the applicant represented that they'd be willing to replace those trees at the direction of the DPW director within the layout of the road. Street trees are typically within the layout, and I think that's something that should probably be addressed potentially in a condition.
Other questions?
Just on...
Go ahead, Sean.
On the trees, on the sidewalk side, though, even though I think that the applicant expressed at the last meeting that, given permission from the DPW, they would think about replacing those, that's really the narrowest section of sidewalk on Main Street. And I don't see, if the building comes to where the building's planned, there's really no realistic expectation that trees are going to be planted there.
I would agree. I think there needs to be some flexibility at the direction of the Public Works Director, street trees in the, in the proximity to the project, but it may be difficult without losing parking spaces and basically expanding the sidewalk in that area. It might not be ideal location, but that two street trees get replaced along Main Street.
Okay.
As applicable.
All right. So it's not in front of the building, but someplace on Main Street?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
I have kind of a long comment. I just want to make sure everybody else gets their questions answered. So first of all, I'm sorry I missed the October 3 meeting, but I did watch the recording, and I also read all the comments that were submitted. So I thought it might be useful to really quickly go through the special permit criteria and sort of where we are on that, or where I believe we are. So we are directed to follow 5.7.5 of the Gloucester zoning ordinance, and the first direction there is to criteria shall be considered as guidelines in addition to those of section 1.8.3 and 1.8.4. 1.8.4 doesn't really apply to this project, but 1.8.3 has a couple of criteria that does apply. One, that the social, economic, and community needs are served by the project, and I believe that it does. I hope my colleagues would agree with me, or jump in if you don't. It provides much-needed housing with small units that we have been needing in Gloucester. Fills in that gap a little bit. Plus, it adds either three or four affordable units, depending on the level of affordability that the applicant decides on. With regard to traffic flow and safety, we had a traffic report that said there would be extremely minimal impact. With regard to utilities and other public services, we had the consultant peer review say that the applicant plan for that is adequate. With regard to neighborhood character and social structure, I do believe it's consistent with the neighborhood character of mixed residential and commercial uses. Plus, it received something from the Historic District Commission, which I think is the appropriate, certificate of appropriateness, approval from the Historic District Commission. I admit I don't love the aesthetics of the building, but the planning board doesn't get to comment on that. So that's just my personal opinion. In terms of the qualities of the natural environment, you know, with the help of the peer review consultant, I think we know that it's met the environmental standards, and the stormwater management has been addressed. With a potential fiscal impact, it certainly adds to the city's residential tax income, and there's no vulnerability to flooding in that area. So that is 1.8.3. Back to seven, no, 5.7.5, A, a major project should have access from an arterial or collector street via ways serving not more than 10 single-family homes. I believe that requirement's been met, since there's not single-family homes on the collector street. It's not connected to, no, it is connected to municipal storage, so we don't have to worry about B. C, the site plan, kind of review that the planning board does, again, with the help of the peer review consultant, I believe all the requirements have been met, except for the removal of the two street trees. Thank you for the people who brought that up, which the applicant has agreed to replace, and which we will recommend as a condition to the special permit. And then all the other requirements of the zoning ordinance, they got relief from the ZBA for the setbacks and the vegetative cover, and they do comply with everything else except for the height and the lot area per dwelling unit and the open space per dwelling unit, which they are asking from the city council for relief, and I suggest we leave that to the city council to figure out. And then, where a multifamily residential facility is proposed in a non-residential district, we want the public good to be served, which, again, adding housing, including affordable units, does, does that for me. And then in an as residentially zoned area, would not be adversely affected. I believe there are no adverse effects, and that the use permitted in the zone would not be noxious to multifamily or assisted living use. And I believe that, in fact, it supports the economy and vitality of the downtown by having those units there. And all of the rest of 5.7.5 applies to shopping centers and assisted living. So that being said, I recommend that we move on to a motion, if everybody's ready for that.
Anybody would like to respond to Jane's comment? Seeing none.
Okay, I'm not, so we have a long motion, but I'm just going to summarize the conditions in case anybody wants to talk about those before we read the whole thing. So we want to recommend that two street trees that are removed be replaced. We want to recommend landscaping and buffering for 33 Middle Street. We want to make sure the applicant funds a third-party building code review of the construction permit plans and a fire code review, a third-party fire code review of the construction permit plans. We want to recommend that the pavement disturbance shall require curb-to-curb restoration, and that they're in compliance with our inclusionary housing requirements, and that an as-built plan detailing all utilities is submitted prior to occupancy permit, and that the retaining wall in the rear of the property has a pre-construction survey, and that the wall is monitored for any type of movement, and that, oh, we, it looks like we mentioned landscaping twice. Yeah, anyway. And if everybody agrees that with that, I can read the whole thing.
So I guess the only addition I would offer is that the street trees be replaced at the discretion of the DPW director?
Yeah. Yes. In proximity to the proposed project.
At a Gloucester crossing. So any comment on those conditions before we move to a formal reading of the motion? Hearing none. Jane, that's all you.
Okay, bear with me, everybody. I move that based on the application submitted by 20 Main Street LLC for a 24 residential unit mixed-use development to be located at 20 Main Street, Assessors Map 7, Lot 94, City Department reports, and the planning board commissioned peer review by Watson and Sampson engineers, the planning board finds that the applicant, 20 Main Street LLC, has provided sufficient data on the hydrology and stormwater management, water and sewer utility design, and traffic impact assessment to demonstrate that the impacts of the proposed project have been minimized, and that the project as revised and reflected in the revised plan set dated 10, or rather, October 15, 2024, satisfies the special permit criteria of sections 1.8.3 and 5.7.5 of the zoning ordinance. Further, the planning board recommends that any decision of the city council consider incorporation of the following conditions. One, prior to the issuance of the special permit, the applicant shall enter into agreement with the Director of Public Works for the replacement of the two street trees to be removed as part of the proposed project with proximity to the proposed project preferred. Such agreement may be incorporated in a decision by reference. Two, prior to the issuance of the special permit, request further detail regarding the landscaping and buffering for 33 Middle Street, and any such plan may be incorporated in a decision by reference. Three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall fund a third-party building code review of the construction permit plans. Four, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall fund a third-party fire code review of the construction permit plans. Five, the extent of pavement disturbance in Main Street shall require curb-to-curb restoration with grind and inlay of new pavement. Six, prior to the issuance of any occupancy permit, the applicant shall demonstrate compliance with section 5.1.1, inclusionary housing requirements included, including the number of affordable units to be provided, the income limits of said units, and a schedule of completion. Seven, prior to the issuance of any occupancy permit, as-built plans detailing all utilities shall be submitted to the Building Department and the Department of Public Works for review of consistency with permit plans. Eight, prior to the issuance of building, of the building permit, applicant shall complete a pre-construction survey of the retaining wall in the rear of the property and monitor the wall for subsidence or movement, and confirm the same prior to issuance of any occupancy permit.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsen, and a second by Doug Cook. I need a roll call vote.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member McCarroll?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member Bookin?
Yes.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, we just got one or two more items, really, but next big one. So next on the agenda this evening is public hearings. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law 40A, Section 5, in the Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 1.1.1, the planning board will, shall consider the following proposed zoning amendments. Amend Section 5.9 Cluster Development, Section 5.9.3.2, review by other boards by adding a new subsection A as follows: A, review by independent consultants. The planning board shall consider whether, due to the complexity of the application plans, okay, submitted and specific subject matter expertise requires, to thoroughly review the application, retaining a third-party consultant pursuant to general law C44, Section 53G, would facilitate the review process. And amend Section 5.7, Major Projects, Section 5.7.4, planning board review by adding the following sentence at the end of the existing section. Consideration should be given as to whether review by a third-party independent consultant pursuant to general law C44, Section 53G, would be appropriate due to the complexity of the application's plan submitted and specific subject matter expertise required to thoroughly review the application. And to amend Section 5.7.5D, special permit criteria by adding the following sentence after the first sentence of the section. Consider, consideration should be given as to whether review, as to whether review by third-party independent consultant pursuant to general law 40C and 53G would be appropriate to, due to the complexity of the application, plan submitted and specific subject matter expertise required to thoroughly review the application. So this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Greg?
Sure. So this is something that the planning board has the authority to do already under the subdivision control law, as well as directed under the special permits that you administer, and then the reviews like we just completed this evening. There appears to be a desire of at least two counselors to strengthen that language, make a stronger reference to the board's authority. I think the intention is to make it clear to an applicant that this is something that they may encounter, making it a little bit clearer. And, and again, it doesn't change the authority of the board to make that determination when you feel that it's needed. But again, also makes it clear that this is, is something that might be conducted by the board to an applicant. So it's, it's a little bit of a wordsmithing. It doesn't change the ability of the board to do what it does, and that's, you know, the language that's been proposed.
So do we want to comment? All right, we are on a public hearing. So if you would like to come and speak in favor, we'll start the in-favors first. Again, this is a, a technical change to, to our current language, and so if you would like to come forward and state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes to comment on this proposal. Yes, ma'am?
Can you hear me? Camille Vasenti, 158 Essex Ave.
Camille Vasenti, 158 Essex Ave. This is a four, but also additional, I have additional comments about the four. So I appreciate review of these regulations, and Greg, you sort of clarified what this means beyond what is already in place, that it's more just a solidification of that. It still seems vague, as it depends on the complexity of the project, and it seems like for clusters and major projects, they are complex in nature. And I argue regulations should require third-party reviews, so there's no gray area on the definition of complexity. Is this something that, I don't know if that's in discussion now, or if that's something that could be a part of this discussion? If third-party reviews are required, perhaps plans may be better developed to meet the regulations and ultimately save time for all parties, including our own city resources. Thank you.
Ma'am? Clear out the room, huh? Anybody else like to speak? Seeing none. The elections guy? Okay, all right. Okay, so I guess we'll close the public hearing or public comment period, and discussion amongst board members.
When have I not had a comment? I think Camille brings up a great point, but I don't know. I mean, I think considering the third-party, so it's the burden on staff that is relieved by the third-party review, so.
So again, depending upon, there's probably a scenario out there where there could potentially be a reuse of a building, for instance, that doesn't have a lot of site modification, just a change of use of an interior that may not necessarily require engineering analysis or other analyses. And it really is kind of a menu of options that the board has. So you can choose, for instance, in some examples, you might not want to pursue a certain aspect of review, rather than cataloging all the things that we typically would look at a project and say, we're going to require submission on all these particular aspects and also a peer review. I don't know that we can require it. I think you're authorized to do it, but I don't think it can be an absolute requirement. So again, I think there's no doubt that, you know, those, the projects that have been mentioned are usually typically complex, and they usually involve some form of third-party review, to the extent that it's not something that can be managed in-house. So the board's engineer by the subdivision control laws is usually the city engineer. The application is first reviewed internally, and a determination is made as to whether it's something that should be reviewed more thoroughly, just because of its, again, because of the complex nature. If something was, for instance, a single sewer connection, a single building, there may be the ability to review that in-house. So again, I don't think it changes very much. You have the ability to do that, and it's the board's determination. It's just kind of, I think in some instances, we have had applicants that may have balked a little bit, and this is a little bit more of, this is the information the board or the council might need, and we're going to require that this review be conducted.
So essentially, this, we already have this ability, but we have the ability to require it without saying that we require it, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, it makes the process a little bit more clear to an applicant, that this might be happening, and so they have to be prepared for that, right?
Is that, when there's third-party reviews, that paid for by the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. And to Camille's point, what defines a complex project?
Well, I mean, I think multi-unit development, certainly from a raw land development perspective, is usually complex enough that there's, you know, a stormwater management plan, there's a site analysis, and a lot of engineering analysis that's provided as part of an application. And so sometimes it could simply also be just the capacity of the engineering division and Public Works to comment on something like that. So it's, I mean, the triggers in the major project review, I would agree, are typically something that will warrant some form of additional review.
So as an example, the project that we approved that came in as an A&R project over on Atlantic, I believe, on the way to Winger Sheek Beach, where nine A&R lots were created, would that be considered a complex project or not, given the number of units that are being created there?
It is, but it's unfortunate that that's the subdivision control law. If an A&R is proposed, there is no additional review of the development of the lot. You can only consider what the potential is based on what's submitted and look at the condition of the roadway. So you're kind of, you're a little detached from individual lot development.
Okay.
Unless it's in a subdivision.
Anything that's a definitive subdivision?
Yes.
Application or cluster or?
Open space residential development, even four-lot common driveway, that could be complicated. All those are things that the board can review.
Thanks. Other questions? The public comment period is closed, closed public hearing, and further discussion amongst board members. Seeing none.
I move...
Just reference the three sections.
Okay. I move that we approve, recommend, the city council, the adoption of the following, the following changes to the proposed zoning amendments. Section 5.9 Cluster Development, Section 5.9.3.2, review by other boards, and the amendments of Section 5.7 Major Projects and Section 5.7.4 Planning Board Review, and the amendment of Section 5.7.5D Special Permit Criteria, and, yes, that's it.
We have a motion by Jane Remson. I need a second, please.
So moved.
A second by Doug Cook. I need a roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Remson?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member McCarroll?
Yes.
Member Remson? Sorry, member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member Bookin?
Yes.
Next on the agenda are minutes from October 3, 2024.
I didn't see them in the drive.
Hold on, hold on, pull them up.
Where's the part, is that it?
No.
Oh. Maybe a quick overview? Under Mr. Fafaza does a quick zip through of the plan?
Okay.
Yeah, you already passed it. It's right there.
Yeah.
No page numbers. Page numbers.
They're at the top, so that...
Slow down, slow down. That's okay.
Questions, comments, amplifications, modifications? Seeing none. Accept the motion to approve the minutes from October 3, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Sean Henry. I need a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Hank McCarroll, and a roll call vote.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Remson?
Abstain.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member McCarroll?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Abstain.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member Bookin?
Yes.
So we are under other business matters not reasonably anticipated. Got nothing? Got nothing. All right, Hank, yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move to adjourn.
I have a motion. I need, by Hank McCarroll, I need a second, please. Thank you, Doug Cook. Roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Remson?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member McCarroll?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member Bookin?
Yes.
Okay.